And then we also have several members of our maids' dream team that is here with us, supporting us at the town hall and also ready to address any questions or concerns that you may have. And as I call your names, please stand so that people can recognize who you are. We have Attorney Cynthia Lindsay. Attorney Teresa Beasley. Attorney Julie Merwitz. Attorney Bill Gutten. Attorney Paul Novak. I think I already said my name. Y'all could have Attorney Brad... I don't want to say your name. That was not my place. We have Attorney Charmaine Seeley. And then what else do we have? Attorney Jeremy Orr just came from the NRBC. Attorney Carrie Fadik. Attorney Peggy Pitt. So as you can see, we have a lot of attorneys on our team.
It's my thing.
Attorney Beth Rivers is back here. Oh, thank God. Attorney Esther Beresowski. Then Emily Worthen. And we have Attorney Taylor, who runs our Flint office, standing up there. Not here, not here. She don't know where. So, but really just wanted to show you that we are collaborating with attorneys who have expertise from different areas and we're strong on our cases and on our claims in the court. So we want you to see that we're still together. And I told you two years ago, actually 2015, when we had our first town hall, that we had a dream team. And that team has only gotten better. So we are in great hands with the team that you have and that you see before you. So I'm gonna get right into kind of reminding people how we got where we are. Because this didn't really start from the April 25th, 2014 switch day. It really started from the imposition of an emergency manager. Because they usurped all of our voices, all of our votes, and all of our authority when they placed an emergency manager here in the city of Flint. And that one person made all the decisions that affected all of us. So in March 2013, the emergency manager announced that we were leaving the Detroit water system to go to the KWA. And that's the Kerrigandee Water Resort. You guys remember when they did that?
Yeah.
And so in April of 2013, the city of Detroit gave the city of Flint notice that they were gonna turn off their water supply one year from that day. So as of April 2014, we would no longer be receiving water from Detroit. Now remember Detroit, Detroit got their water from Lake Huron. They treated it in Detroit and then shipped it down here to Flint. That was lake water. Now, the KWA was not expected to be built until 2016, and that was being optimistic. So there was a clear two-year gap between the time that we were gonna be cut off from Detroit and the time that the KWA was gonna be ready to use. And in their infinite wisdom, the emergency manager, through the governor, decided to utilize the Flint River. We knew from the back, if you're from Flint, you knew off the back that that was not a good decision. You knew from the history of General Motors and all of the pollution that had gone into that river, the bodies that have been found in that river, that they didn't even live in that water. But you knew in 2014 it was a bad idea. But they did it anyway. As soon as they did it, the visible signs were there and they were clear. We started seeing the discoloration. We started experiencing the rashes. Some people experienced this hair loss. You know, and some people really got violently sick from the switch. They also were starting to fail tests, the water quality tests. Bacteria were showing up all over the place. And so within months, there was that positive test for the bacteria, the city decided, well, we'll just put more chlorine in the water. And so then they began to overchlorinate the water. I don't know if you remember, I'm sure you do, but we had three boil advisories within a span of 22 days. And at that time, they were looking at the TTHM, which is a total trihalomethate. But they knew that the lead was increasing. And when they taught us to boil our water, that basically concentrated the lead levels and increased our exposure to lead. So even though they knew about the lead exposure and the lead increase, they didn't tell us. They were telling us, you're okay, you're all right, drink the water. So that water became our coolant. So in the fall of 2014, they sent out, well, they found out about the TTHM, but they didn't notify the public until January of 2015. And even when they notified the public, they said, if you have a compromised, a severely compromised illness, or if you have an infant, or if you're elderly, that you should consult your doctor before drinking the water. If not, don't drink the water. But only they should consult, everybody, the rest of us, who are being exposed to all of these toxins and chemicals. And then the city began selling the EPA's water tests. And they mailed those tests in May, August, and November of 2014 consecutively. We know in October 2014, General Motors got off the water because it was corroding their engines and their parts. So imagine what it was doing to us, what it was doing to our equities. And we know that from June of 2014 to December of 2014, there was extremely increased in the lead levels that the MDEQ knew about, but not revealed it to the public. They didn't warn us, they didn't tell us, but they took steps to cover it up. And that's what makes a lot of these bad actors so egregious, you know, shock to the conscience. It's why criminal charges are mandatory in this situation. So we also know in October of 2014 that the defendants discovered a possible connection between the water and Legionella disease. They didn't warn us either. And we know that 12 people should not have lost their lives from Legionella disease because of these bad acts. And throughout all of this, we were being told, it's okay, you're overreacting, you're exaggerating. And really, let's be clear, we're not here because those bad actors had a attack of good conscience. We're not here because they just decided to do the right thing. We're here because we spoke up, we're here because we spoke out, we're here because we protested. We protested at City Hall. We boarded buses and we protested in Lansing. We filled plastic bottles and containers of the water showing the public and the world the discoloration, the yellow, the brown, the orange, and some of it. You could clearly see the particles still floating around in the water. And we said, this came directly from our tasks. You know, and it was only when the world started to see what was going on in Flint that the government decided to wake up. That's when they decided to wake up. And in June of 2015, the community came together. And I filed the only lawsuit in the city of Flint to stop the defendants from using the Flint River as a source of water. I filed that in June, in July, one month after that lawsuit was filed, the state issued their statement, and I don't know if you remember, but it was big front headline. And the state said, relax. You don't think I remember that? They said, relax, the water is safe to drink. And the entire time they were telling us, they were shipping bottled water to the state workers in the city of Flint so they wouldn't have to drink the water. So it was just all kinds of hypocrisy going on. And they really thought we would be expendable, but we're not. We came here tonight because we want to update you, we want to educate you, we want to give you an opportunity to ask us questions, to get any questions that you have answered so that we can address any concerns. We have many, many people here that are gonna talk about the resources that are gonna be available for you. And again, the criminal questions should be directed at the town hall tomorrow, but civil questions, we're gonna answer every question you have tonight. And we want you to know that we are in court, we are at the table talking, we are fighting for you, we have been and we will continue to fight for justice, not only for you, but for all of us, for Flint, because Flint will rise because we are Flint Strong. Just to let you know, this town hall meeting is being livestreamed by NBC 25 on Facebook. So if there are others who are watching this online that can try to participate, we do want to conduct this meeting in a orderly fashion. So please don't shout out, don't yell any questions that you may have. You will be recognized when you come to the mic. If you get a phone call or anything, please step out of the room so you don't disturb anyone else's ability to receive the communication that we have to share with you tonight. And with that, we're gonna start with our first legal update from Attorney Michael Pitt.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for seeing us on here. We've been fighting this fight for almost three years. It started in November of 2015. We're coming up to the third year anniversary. Excuse me, my dad's here. What have we been able to accomplish in three and a half years? The team that yourself put together, the lawyers that you met here, have been working to make sure that all avenues of escape have been cut off so the state of Michigan is left with only two choices. Either they settle the case or they try it. Those are the only two choices they have. And let me give you sort of the rundown of what we have been doing with people of Flint. This case was started in November of 2015. In April of 2016, Judge Omera, who had the case initially dismissed the entire case. We were out of court. We appealed it to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. The Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals said to us, we won. And they said to the state, you lose. Say it, you lose. In October of 2016, the state of Michigan tried to have the case that we filed in the Court of Claims dismissed by Judge Boonstra. Judge Boonstra is a Republican. Judge Boonstra is a conservative judge. And Judge Boonstra wrote in his opinion, "Such conduct on the part of state actors, especially the allegedly intentional poisoning of the water users of Flint, if true, may be fairly characterized and so outrageous as to be truly conscious shocking." We won, they lost. The state of Michigan appealed Judge Boonstra to the Michigan Court of Appeals. What do you think happened? They lost. In January of 2018, the Michigan Court of Appeals, another conservative group of judges, said, "Various state actors intentionally concealed scientific data and made false assurances to the public regarding the safety of the Flint River, even after they had received information suggesting that the water supply directed to your homes was contaminated with Legionella and changes in high levels of toxic lead. At the very least, plaintiffs' allegations are sufficient to support a finding of deliberate indifference on the part of the government actors involved in this case. Plainters have alleged sufficient facts to show a constitutional violation." We won, they lost. In January of 2019, Judge Weeden, who filed in her favor, her case was appealed to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals a second time. A very conservative judge of the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals wrote an opinion that said, "As with the Flint defendants, these state defendants created the Flint water environmental disaster and then intentionally attempted to cover up their grievous decisions. Their actions shocked our conscience." It shocked the conscience of the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. We won, they lost. In April of 2019, Judge Weeden was asked whether Governor Snyder belonged in the lawsuit. She said, when asked about Governor Snyder, "The governor was indifferent because instead of mitigating or lessening the risk of harm caused by contaminated water." Her words, not mine, he covered it up. In private, he worried about the need to return Flint to Detroit water and the political implications of the crisis. But in public, he denied all knowledge despite being aware of the developing crisis." This is our former governor, our federal judge. Our federal judge describing the acts of our former governor. As a result, plaintiffs, you folks, were lured into a false sense of security. Is that true? Were you lured into a false sense of security? Of course you were. They could have taken protective measures if only they had known what the governor knew. If only you knew what Governor Snyder knew, you would have stopped drinking the damn water. Governor Snyder's administration even encouraged them to continue to drink and bathe in water. Governor Snyder's actions were deliberately indifferent and exhibited a callous disregard for plaintiffs' right of bodily integrity. Not my words, not Ted's words, but a federal judge has said that about your former governor. We won, they lost. Pursuing the EPA. The EPA told Judge Parker they don't belong in court. That they didn't do anything wrong, and that they should be dismissed from the case. And they filed a motion to dismiss their case. And Judge Parker said, "The contamination which began in 2014 and continued for years as local and state officials provided inaccurate information about the safety issues of city water, EPA officials knew residents were not being born of the contamination. They knew it. These lies went on for months while the people of Flint continued to be poisoned. EPA let it happen. Judge Parker would not let them out of the case." We won, they lost. I think you're getting the picture. We have won every challenge that we have faced with. Every, every one of them. And so the state is now in a pickle. And the pickle is, we can't get these cases dismissed because what we did was wrong. Every judge was looked at this case as agreeing that the state was wrong. We are right, and we are the side of right. And the state has a choice. Settle the case or go to trial. If they go to trial, the consequences could be severe. And so my partner Ted Leopold will talk about what's happening along the Sullivan's line. But I just want to comment about something that I know is really troubling all of you folks. I know you're all concerned about what Attorney General Nessel did in dismissing the cases. Now, I'm not making apologies or excuses for her. I'm gonna tell you what the facts are. She inherited a tremendous mess. A first-class mess that the prior administration, Governor Snyder, and Bill Shuie created the mess. And how did they create the mess? They had the audacity to pay for both sides of that criminal case. They were paying Mr. Flood money to prosecute the case, and they were paying the attorneys for the people who were being prosecuted. The state was paying both sides of the case. So what do you think happens when somebody else is paying illegal bills? The litigation goes on forever. It's never gonna come to an end. Dana Nessel inherited that mess. It was a... We, when we found out that this was going on, we complained bitterly to the governor and to the state, to no avail. But they let that go on, that situation where the state of Michigan was paying for prosecution and for defense. Those people who are guilty of those crimes under a crime they were committed should not have had their attorney fees being paid by the state of Michigan, period. If they had done this right, those people would have pled guilty, and someone would already be in jail. But the prior administration messed up. They created this problem, and now Dana Nessel was given the task to fix it. She did what she did. And you can say maybe she should have done it a different way, but she had to do something. So I want to let you all know that when Dana Nessel is here tomorrow, you need to speak to her in a constructive way because each and every one of you, every one of you, have a constitutional right as a victim. In our constitution, there's something called victim rights. And you have the right to know what the state is doing in prosecuting the crimes that were committed against you. Every one of you had a crime committed against you. Every one of you had a crime committed against you. And you have the right to know what's going on in that prosecution and to confer with the prosecution. I suggest that you all get organized, talk to the governor in a constructive way, and say, you say you're gonna renew the prosecutions, good. We want to be informed, and we're gonna appoint leaders for you to talk to. Get organized and make sure that Dana Nessel knows you're out there and assert your legal rights as a crime victim. Because you have a constitutional right, assert your protection. Exercise your rights. That's all I have to say.
Now we'll hear from Attorney Ted Leopold.
Good evening. Good evening. I am honored to stand here with everybody up here and with all of you to talk to you about what we have been doing along the lines of trying to provide a full measure of justice to each and every one of you over the last several years. I am reminded, as I look around and out here tonight and see your shirts that many of you are wearing, that talk about Flint is still broken. But I also hear in the same sentences, in the same voices, in the same words, with high volume, Flint Strong. So if I talk to you here for a moment, we could talk about how Flint is still broken with its pipes, with its water.
I was pouring water into my kids' water bottles, and my kids are right there. Shout out to Jacob Grace. They're familiar with Flint. We've been trekking up here ever since February of 2016. They enjoy coming up here, especially for your pony dogs. So we don't get so much of in western Michigan. I'm from Kalamazoo, and when I was in my kitchen pouring their water bottles, I stopped for a minute and I thought of the mamas in Flint, I thought of the dads in Flint, that trusted their government, who said that the water was safe to drink. And they gave it to their children, they gave it to their babies, and they gave it to themselves. And I'm an attorney that specializes with kids with disabilities. And I had private practice at the time, and I said to myself, I really hope that I can do something. And I thank God that I was called by the ACLU of Michigan to get involved because we knew in the wake of the Flint water crisis, the burden that the babies were gonna have to carry in their bodies was gonna reinforce a racial stereotype if we didn't stop it. And if we didn't raise the awareness of these children are not bad, they are impulsive because of the lead and the neurotoxicity that has gotten into their brains and their bones and their tissues. And we need to do something to identify what their needs are. We approached the state under the Snyder administration. We didn't want to have to go to litigation. We thought they'd want to do the right thing, right? These are children, for the love, right? Approached them, and they said, well, we supplied nurses to all the schools. And let me just tell you, they got the nurses quota up to what it should have been. We were the worst in the nation, having one nurse for all of Flint Community Schools. They just got one in every school. Well, that's a good thing, but you should have had that before the water crisis, right? Children deserve to be healthy to go to school. And they also said, well, we supplied them with leafy vegetables. Nutrition can ameliorate some of the lead-related issues, but we're talking about a school system that was already struggling to meet the needs of special education students and was going to be inundated with further kids that had struggles, right? Behavior-related disabilities so often are overpunished, over-disciplined, and pushed into the criminal justice system. Yet I'm sure that we know of children that are being impacted in that way, right? And I sat on Tuesday in the Genesee Court, and I watched the kids come in. And it just renewed my fight inside of me because I saw kids coming in for probation violations. Why? Because they were suspended from school. Who's asking the question as to why they were suspended from school, right? The impulsivity, the problems that they're struggling with, those ADHD-like symptoms, those autism-related systems, those can be caused by lead. And that's not something people are talking about. So I'll get to my lawsuit. We did file it. We filed on behalf of 15 main plaintiffs who are class representatives. They were all students with disabilities that reside in the Flint Community School district. So they may go to charter schools, but if the Flint Community Schools was robust enough to meet their needs, they would have the opportunity to send their child there. Of course, the first thing that the state threw at us was a motion to dismiss, to get that case out of court. Usually with special education litigation, we filed it under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It is an entitlement statute. It means that children are entitled to a free, appropriate, public education. And what is appropriate is determined upon what their needs are. We need to identify what their needs are so we can conform the system to them and what they need, rather than making them conform to our system and making them fit, right? I've seen children that have autism that are being diagnosed as cognitively impaired here in Flint because it's cheaper to dump them in a CI classroom than it is to have an autism specialist on staff to really provide those targeted interventions. This is horrific that this is happening.
They also needed to do a better job of prioritizing the areas where we pretty much knew lead service lines were as opposed to going to places randomly, digging up copper lines and revariating them. So using a specific model to determine where these lead service lines were, going to those homes first, prioritizing them, and making sure that their pipes were replaced immediately. Also, as part of this amended agreement, it requires the city to report back on these numbers with us regularly, report back on the use of those funds. And it requires a conference as this year winds down, this is the last year of service line replacement amendment. As it winds down, to have a conference to make sure that that money was spent adequately towards lead service line replacement. And any discrepancies that came up, we can address using the force of the law. And that's where we are now. So, as I mentioned, we went back to court this year. That amendment was filed and agreed upon in February. And since then, we're already back up to a 60% hit rate on replacing lead service lines. So up from 10% last year, up to 60% this year, and that number is continuing to rise. As well, the city has hired a project manager to help coordinate the lead service line replacements. If you all have noticed, right, maybe the beginning of the year and the weather was bad. You probably didn't see as many, but now you should be seeing way more lead service lines being replaced in your neighborhoods. So that's one thing that's going to be critical to pay attention to, you know, as we look to see who's on those lists and where those numbers are going to be prioritized. And as well, just to give a quick update. So that agreement that was agreed upon a couple of years ago dealt with 18,000 service lines being replaced or excavated, 18,000 being excavated, which is dug up. As of June 2019, there are 22,000 lines that have been dug up of the 28,000 estimated that needs to be dug up. Almost 9,000 service lines have been replaced. As part of that, this final year, there are about 7,000 left, prioritizing in two groups, 4,500 and 3,500. So 4,500 will be hit, followed by, based on that new criteria that we talked about for hitting lead service lines, followed by the remaining 3,500. And this is, you know, this is just an update. And on behalf of the NFC and our co-councils at ACLU, we know, right, that no amount of money and no amount of lead service lines being replaced can begin to redo or reverse the harm done here to the people of Flint.
What continues to carry on in these cases. Raise your hand if you ever protested when the water was switched. Look around. These are the people who started this. Raise your hand if your pipes have been replaced. Raise your hand if your lawn was tore up when they replaced your pipe. Well, some good news we just heard is that the city council just passed a resolution so they can come and fix the lawns that they tore up. Right now, we're going to transition, and we're going to ask our second panel to come forward. And while they're doing that, we're going to have a little music while they switch seats.
Sorry, we didn't tell you about the switch. And I thought it'd be funny that we'd go switch. So my name is Deborah Ferholden, and I just got promoted yesterday. I'm new associate meeting for Public Health Integration and the director of the Division of Public Health at our MSU Flint campus. What we've created at MSU to me is nothing short of a miracle. But we didn't create it. The community created it. We did that in partnership with you. If you were one of the people about eight to 10 years ago who worked on that, could you raise your hand? Well, we got one lone soldier, but we had about 30, 40 community people. And that's Avon Lewis, my partner in public health. And so we're here because the community wanted us here. The model that we use is we don't do anything to people. We do it with you. You are our partners. We will not impose anything on you. We are your partners. And Bishop Jefferson does have very well. Just a couple of quick things that I want to highlight about our work is that we are here to protect and preserve the public health. We are that people will not forget. The polls are going to tell you about the registry. I can't tell you how important the registry is because it is the best tool that we had to both document the long-term effects and also to intervene on. See, we don't want to just observe the problem. We actually want to bring solutions to the problem. So that's what I'm telling you. Representing MSU and the Division of Public Health, you can count on us for. We will be your partners in making sure that people don't forget and protecting and preserving the public health long-term. One of the big things that we've done is we have supported Medicaid expansion in Flint. And you know it's important because we know the medical impacts of lead exposure and other exposures that came through the water crisis. You are entitled to services and care out of that. That will end predictably if we don't make the case ongoing. So something else that our division is doing is doing the work to evaluate who's accessing those services.
... impacted by the Flint water crisis because they lived in Flint, went to school in Flint, worked in Flint, or attended daycare in Flint during the time that we were using Flint River water, so April 2014 to October 2015. We want to make sure that people are getting connected to resources and services and create to support their health. Kristen talked a little bit already about MCE. That's just one of 30 services that we're trying to make sure that families get connected to. And then the second thing that we're doing is what Deborah talked about, is really trying to understand the impact on people's health, both mental health and physical health of living through the Flint water crisis. So we're asking people to complete a survey about their health to help us understand how it has affected you. And really an opportunity to tell your story. We already have over 7,000 people who have signed up to say that they're interested. And we have over 1,000 people who've already completed those surveys or in the process of getting referred to services. But we know that over 100,000 people were impacted. And the more people that share their story, the more powerful the registry is to really show what the impact is on the Flint community and what services and programs we need to continue to find to support Flint.
Now it's time for everyone to ask their questions. If you want to direct your question to a particular person, you can do that. If not, then we'll allow the person that's most appropriate to answer and address your issue as that. This timeframe, we have until about 8:30. So we have about 45 minutes for question and answer. So please, if you have questions, now is the time. And Quincy, we're going to head and start with you.
Good day, Quincy Murphy. My question is to the NFC.
Jeremy Orr. There you go. Got a question for you, sir. Go ahead, Quincy, he can hear you.
My question to the NFC is, you guys went and did a lawsuit settlement for the $97 million on behalf of the residents of the city of Flint to get the service lines replaced. And during that, that lawsuit also stopped the water distribution for residents. That was a vital need. Why in the world would you guys stop, make a settlement that had a clause in that to stop water distribution when the service line wasn't replaced? And that was part of why the day of this stuff, these lines is not replaced. And y'all settled that, and then even come to the residents and ask us what we thought. And when we found out that, we was like, how horrific of you guys to make a settlement like that and stop the bottled water. And now we scrambling, trying to figure out this senior citizens and all of those people don't have ways to get.
No, thank you for the question. And, you know, I want to provide some clarity on that. So the ceasing of the distribution of water was never part of our settlement. So the injunction that we filed before the settlement took place was the injunction that required the state to even give the water. So between the time and the settlement, we filed the injunction that required the state to give the water. However, that injunction from the federal court only required the state to give the water until the lead service line replacement began to happen. So that time ran. Basically, it lapped. So it was never part of the settlement. It was never part of any sort of negotiation to get one thing or another. It was simply the time that lapsed on it, and it was within the state's purview as according to the federal government's injunction, the federal court's injunction, to cease giving that water. But at no point did we negotiate a way or trade off the distribution of water in our settlement. That's no reason. It's just the timing of it, essentially occurred with the timing that it did. After a year of that, the state decided to stop the distribution of water.
Speaking to the mic'er.
I'm not trying to make this absolutely incorrect. I think, I'm not trying to debate, but that's absolutely incorrect. We did negotiate in December. The state was supposed to have to make sure that every house has a filter. And then y'all came back after December 2017 and came back to the table, and the pods were shutting down. And they went back to the governor and told the governor, "Hey, y'all need to let us keep on doing it until October." It was negotiated because once the EPA said that the standard was reached, the pods stopped there. But my thing is, and like I said, I'm not trying to debate it, but if you go back and read the settlement, you will see that. My question is to the lawyers. I don't have any problems with the lawyers or class action. My thing is, is that last week, you saw where 9/11, the first responders had to go back to the legislators to get mine, all right? I don't believe in handshakes and word of mouth saying, "I promise I will do that." We need things in writing because what's going on here is that we're only speaking about lead. And we had a whole lot of other things in this world. We had a cocktail. And the only people that are being serviced are the kids and the seniors, which should happen, but we're missing the middle people. The cancer cluster studies, if you notice, we have had a lot of deaths with cancer, leukemia, multiple melanoma, B-cell, T-cell. In the report, November 2014, land did a jar test, and it showed that when the DTHM was at the highest level, they showed that it was a sewer leak upstream from the intake of the water treatment plant, which was called chloroform, which caused the DTHM. No one is talking about that. And if you look at the ATSDR report from January 2019, 1957, 1985, it showed that the veterans had cancer within two years of drinking contaminated water for over 30 days. We need for you all, because all we're talking about is lead. Because lead is the easiest thing to prove right now. And like you said earlier, Michelle, we got advisory letters that states seven years, you will have cancer if you weigh 154 pounds, two liters a day at 0.80 parts per gallon. We need for you to write in there in a summary that we will be funded for the rest of our life. From medical, I see your face. I know it's going to be a hard task, but they poisoned us. It was a man-made disease. The terrorists flew a plane into the World Trade Center. It wasn't natural. It was human, man-made. Governor Snyder and his culprits are just as bad as those terrorists. We need... The people in the city of Flint has not been made culpable. It's not about money because chemotherapy, cancer treatment costs a lot. You can give me $100 today. I'm going to spend that. But my long-term treatment is for the rest of my life. And we're going to be bottled down with insurance costs, copay, and everything else. Can you promise us that when you go in these back rooms and negotiate, that you would negotiate on the medical part of this agreement that the people in between can get insurance that will cover us for presumptive, that's what they call it, presumptive illnesses, and ask for a cancer cluster study so that we could determine what cause of cancer causing from the water? So that we can go to the doctor and say, "Hey, that water caused this cancer right here." We need treatment for it, and we need water point illness doctors here that can diagnose us with a real feeling instead of assuming because they are practitioners and they practice medicine. We need somebody who knows. So can you definitely go in there and ask for a settlement? Thank you, I'm sorry Ted.
Thank you for that question. It was a very important question. Because this is a class action settlement, when the settlement occurs,